All right, we're all here. We're going to call the meeting to order. And it is 6 o'clock. And, Steve, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
... Please read over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for bringing us all here today. And we pray that you would give us all wisdom and words to speak and kindness. And we also pray for healing on our mayor, Lord. We pray that you would be with her and give her strength and energy and heal her, Lord. And we thank you so much for your son dying on the cross for us. And we love you and pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, please be seated. Next item is the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss a variety of different matters. The first one was the liability claim of F. Rayner. The city council decided unanimously to settle this claim against the city for $250,000 to be paid in increments within nine months of the date of judgment, which should be sometime next week, in consideration for dismissal with prejudice of this claim. The settlement is conditioned upon agreeing on the remaining terms on a written settlement agreement. The city council also met in closed session to discuss UFCW Golden State Number Eight labor negotiations. The city negotiator is Dennis Spear. Direction was given to staff. No action was taken. Council met with legal counsel regarding potential litigation. City of Richcrest versus County of Kern. No action was taken, but direction was given to staff. Another pending litigation was the City of Richcrest versus Southern California Edison. No action was taken. Council met with legal counsel regarding anticipated undisclosed litigation. No action was taken, but direction was given to staff. Council met with legal counsel regarding another pending litigation. That's Christopher Calvi versus City of Richcrest. No action was taken, but direction was given to staff. And lastly, there was a public employee performance evaluation of the city manager of City of Richcrest. And no action was taken, but direction was given to staff.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item is presentations. And before our closed session, we did have some changes on the agenda. We are pulling item number seven. And we are moving council comments before public comment. So if the next item then is the Quad State presentation. And former councilman Morgan, are you leading us in that, please?
Madam Mayor and fellow citizens of Richcrest, it's my honor to introduce to you the executive director of Quad State Coalition of Local Governments, Mr. Jerry Hillier, who will be giving the presentation. And Mr. Hillier, my apologies. I have an older document about all the places you go and you visit. I'm going to pass this up to the council members so they can see what they're buying. And I will leave the rest to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much, Steve, for the introduction. And it's good that I walked in at the moment I did. I would have hated to have arrived two minutes later. Anyway, good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you again. It's interesting, and I think it's because of the interest of former councilman Morgan specifically. But of all of the nine counties in the city that are members of the Quad State Local Governments Authority, you are the only group that regularly invite me to appear. And so to get a status report, and I offered to our board last month when we met, I said, you know, I'm available and would be happy to talk to there. And I assume either you're carrying the word back or you don't, you know, you're happy with the way things are going. And they all kind of nodded their heads. But it really does give me a great deal of pleasure to be able to meet with you folks. And in fact, all of the boards and supervisors and county commissioners and councilmen that support us. Quad State Local Governments Authority has existed since 1999. So we're coming on really 18 years of life. And we organize through the rural areas of the Mojave and Sonoran deserts. And carry really the advocacy for a lot of programs that probably wouldn't get the attention in the state associations. And for that reason, we've continued to exist. A couple of, three years ago, Kern County, which had been a member, one of our charter members, dropped out. They've been replaced by Riverside County, who joined this past year. And so that's, we've stayed with nine counties. And we're still having dialogue with some counties over in Arizona to also join us because the issues that we're dealing with really are desert-wide in nature. I've appreciated the support that Steve has given both me personally and the Quad State Organization. And lest some of you are new members, Quad State stands for four states, as you would guess. And we are located in California, Arizona, Nevada, and Utah. And our Utah leg is Washington County around St. George. And their issues are very similar to what yours are here. So we're unified in terms of having a desert-wide perspective. One of the things that is going on that might be of interest or might be of concern, our budget this year is going to be, or for the coming year, that was circulated, is slightly higher, precipitated really by one reason and one reason alone. For the life of Quad State, I've had a separate personal contract with San Bernardino County. And because of, and I won't say my advanced age, but because of the contracting procedures and everything, they are not renewing that contract and going to cover some of the work that I do with them specifically under a purchase order this coming year so they don't have to go through all of the contract procedures. And frankly, I'm just as glad that they're not because it's not a fun thing, preparing an RFP, responding to an RFP. But the other, there are a number of things that I have cost shared with Quad State in terms of participation in ACO and some of the interstate meetings that exist. The good news for Richcrest is that your assessment for the coming year remains the same. You are one of those that is not a formula county. It's a fixed, or not a formula jurisdiction. It's a fixed fee of one-half of the lowest. And the lowest counties are assessed at $2,000. You're one-half of that for $1,000. So I can assure you that regardless of what happens to the budget, you stay the same. So that's good for your budgeting and programming. The reason Steve likes me to come is simply because I can bring you up to date on some of the issues the organization's involved with. And one of the things that has happened this year, and I think we finally have settled Steve's situation. He has, since he's not been on the council, has been somewhat ambiguous in terms of his membership, although he communicates with me regularly and tries to stay in touch on things and does a very good job of that. But I think our county, our authority council, John Tubbs out of San Bernardino, has resolved that, that there's nothing that prevents him being the board member for Quad State as long as the City of Richcrest blesses him with that responsibility. And so I look forward to having him part of the team. And I don't know what action you may want to take to give him a formal title as terms of your permanent representative or your representative for whatever duration you wish. But I think we finally have that resolved. That's another piece of good news. The organization primarily continues to be involved in the desert tortoise issues. I participate regularly in the management oversight group. And we try to keep the lid on things so that the agencies don't propose things that either cost local government money or commit local governments to spending money that they don't have on projects of dubious importance. One of the big things that is, one of their priorities, is fencing the roads. And while the tortoise, some tortoises out in the desert do get on roads, the traffic on many of the highways is not like 395 and therefore doesn't justify and warrant tortoise-proof fencing at $20,000 a mile with buried fence. Caltrans can do that, but counties and cities can't do that. And we have managed to hold the lid on that. We speak very forcefully about that. Another thing that the tortoise people want is habitat restoration. And there's some experimental work, but not very much going on in terms of actually successfully doing type conversions on the desert. And frankly, with the, God, if it just rained every spring like it has this spring, we'd all be thrilled to death and not only have the wildflowers, but the tortoises would have lots to eat. But at any rate, we've tried to keep the lid on that as well, on spending money on futility. One of the things that has unified people is the need for education. And there is a continuing effort in terms of education that goes on in places like the Matarongo Museum and the units of the National Park Service and down in Cal City at the Tortoise Preserve. Education, though, is one of those things that swallow, can swallow large sums of money and no way to measure the payoff. It's not like giving schoolchildren a test at the end of the year and seeing how much they learned and retained. So we have basically adopted a position that we will continue to support those entities that have education programs like the Park Service, but we're not going to put any more money into it than is currently being done. The big deal that I'm working on is predation. And raven predation remains a major issue. And the extent to which all jurisdictions can play a role in terms of reducing subsidies to ravens will help the situation. By various measures, the population of ravens over the last 30, 40 years in the desert has increased really 20-fold and some estimates are much more than that. There's professional arguments in the Fish and Wildlife Service whether predator control, whether, you know, shooting ravens will do any good. I think all of you know that that's a public relations disaster. But at any rate, the main goal is to reduce ravens and reduce raven subsidies, cover trash barrels, cover the bins that are behind fast food restaurants, and try to raise public awareness. Caltrans has done a good job at their rest stops and all. And I think cities like your own can do a lot in terms of encouraging citizens to cover their garbage and make sure that the bins are covered behind restaurants of all kinds. There's been a lot of experimental work right here in this area that's been done that ravens respond negatively to green laser lights. And there's been quite a little bit of experimental work done right here in this area on that. And what it does, though, is moves the ravens from one roosting area to another roosting area, and it does not reduce the population. So they've not found a way to get them to go back to the LA base and do something or reduce their numbers. And so while that's interesting, it's an anecdotal piece of information. That's right, there's a lot of feed. Unfortunately, they, a lot of them come out here because there's less to molest them. So at any rate, we are continuing to work with Fish and Wildlife Service in terms of seeking economical ways to reduce predation. And then finally, one of the things that I do is work with the Desert Landscape Conservation Cooperative. This is one of 22 of these units that's organized throughout the United States. And they have settled on an area in the Mojave Desert which does not involve this part of the desert. It's actually an area in southeastern Inyo County, northeastern San Bernardino County, and extending into Nevada. And they're going to do a pilot science program in the area. It will be driven by tortoises and water and a combination of issues. And ultimately, they want to extend this science activity that's sponsored by the Department of the Interior desert-wide. I'm suspicious of it. I don't, it's involved with a climate change agenda. I don't want to get, see them get involved in anything that's going to cost any of our jurisdictions money or direction in terms of what local people want to do for planning. And so this is one of the specific areas that I've been writing heard on. And I'm one of the few representatives and spokespeople in their whole national organization that speaks for local governments. And one of the things that your support and the support of others does is make sure that I can stay there and remain a voice for local governments. And I think that covers the prepared remarks I had for you folks this evening. If you have any specific questions you'd like to pose, I'm here and pose them. But thank you very much for your continued support. And thank you very much for your wholehearted participation and providing Steve to our organization to represent your interests.
Thank you, sir. Is there any council questions or comments?
I just have one, Madam Mayor, council. Mr. Hillier, is it, you were making mention of the education part. Is it possible, staff or council, that, can we put his information on our website? Thank you, council.
Why not? Yeah, I would think we could. Why can't we?
We're partially paying for his services.
Yeah.
He's doing a good job in education.
Well, and certainly in terms of education, you know, people shouldn't pick up tortoises. And it seems like every generation needs to be reminded that just because they see a tortoise out there in the desert, they shouldn't pick it up. It's the wrong thing to do. And that covering garbage and things like that that encourage the predators on tortoises, particularly the current year's reproduction of tortoises, which are very small and very vulnerable, and all, and to reduce raven predation, both of those things are topics that are, I think, would be well worth a note on your city website. I think it'd be, certainly, it's just my opinion, but they, both of those topics would be well worth a few sentences on your website. Protect the desert tortoise, and here are some things that you can do.
One of the things that Rich Project does in our community is try to clean up. And, I want to try, they do clean up, and they offer a lot of services to the valley. And I'm thinking that perhaps some of the education you've given us in the past years that I've heard you talked about keeping the tops on trash so the ravens aren't out there eating all that trash and then spreading it all over, but even worse, attacking the tortoise. And I think if you could have any information specific to that, maybe numbers and things like that would help us encourage people to remember the tortoise when that happens because of what the ravens do and what our trash enables them to grow and continue.
What I'll do, I have some of the CDs left, and I'll make sure. Steve, did you ever get one of the CDs on the ravens?
Go on, I can't remember.
I have a couple left. I'll, give me your mailing address as I leave, and I'll send you one. And then you can have, and then he can share it with you and share it throughout the community. It's about a 30-minute program that the Desert Managers Group put together. It's basically, it's entirely California-oriented. And much of the photography was done here and at the Weapon Center and down at Edwards Air Force Base. So it's very specific to this particular part of the West Mojave. So I'll make sure Steve gets a copy of that and can share it. And then you can extract. And if you have a good editor or something that could extract little bits and pieces, you're certainly more than welcome to. It's not copyright protected.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Hillier, did you not know that Mr. Morgan, he has available time now, seeing that he is retired? You didn't know that?
I didn't.
I'm not putting him out there, I'm just suggesting that...
I didn't, I did know that he has retired because he informed me there that I better make sure that I use this email address henceforth instead of another email address, which he used to have. On the other hand, he probably, like me, may well, very well flunk retirement because if he does anything like I've followed, I finished one career, and now I've spent 25 years in another career. So that's almost a second career. But retirement can be an exciting time, and it can also be a time that you can make available for a lot of civic activities. So I am aware that Steve has some extra time on his hands these days.
As far as Steve's appointment to this committee, it's been my honor to appoint him for the last three years. And you're stuck with him for another year.
Okay.
So we're proud to have him there representing us.
We finally got our lawyer to go along with that, so it's completely clarified now.
Okay, good. Okay. Any other council comments? Any other public questions? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. And like I say, I very much appreciate the annual invitation I get to come up and visit with you folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item we have, we, as I said, we are moving council comments, announcements, to in front of public comments. So I would like to make an announcement. And I, my apologies to all of you. I do not like sharing personal information, but I'm going to. And will help explain my announcement. I don't know how many of you know, I did put it on Facebook today, which was embarrassing as all get out. But I am being treated for cancer, and I have been going for chemotherapy treatments. And last Wednesday was the day after my first chemotherapy treatment. And I basically lost control of the meeting. And it's my sincere apologies to all of you. And so I would like to state for the record a few things so we're aware now of how we're going to treat public comment and how we're going to treat comments after agenda items. I'm going to read it to you so you understand, and I'm going to be very strong in enforcing this. So I won't have to read it again. You all remember this. But persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. These are items under which we have jurisdiction. So if you're going to come up and talk about the weather, I'm going to ask you to sit down. I thank you for the comments on the weather. If you, we do not control the weather. If you are going to come and speak under items under which we have jurisdiction, I will allow you your five minutes. I am going to ask if I rule that you may not speak and our council or, and our legal council decide that perhaps I'm in error, and I have been at times, that it is within our jurisdiction, then I will refer to them and say, yes, you may continue to speak. We're going to be very strong in this because we have had meetings. The last meeting we had went from 5:00 till 10 minutes after 11:00. And I'm not exactly sure if all those items were exactly pertinent to what we were discussing at the time. So under public comment, if I decide that it is not under our jurisdiction, I will ask you to step back, address it at another time, either other forums, but not at that public comment. On the items after the item, the time when you speak on a council item, whether it be your five minutes or your time to respond afterwards, it must pertain to that item that we are discussing and nothing else. That I ask for the respect and the dignity that we afford you, you afford us. It will simply be on those items. I will rule that you may not continue to speak if it is not on that item unless council or our, our legal council tells us differently. I'm going to enforce it. I'm going to do my job. If you don't like it, my apologies to all, but it's simply going to be the way it is. We're going to operate like we are a government and not a debate forum. This is what we are. You make your comments to us. We listen, we learn, and we lead. Those three L's are how I define our job. And so when it comes time to do that, I will do it. So I appreciate that time. I'm going to make a couple other announcements. Last, Monday night at Sierra Sands School District, there was a long discussion about drugs in our community. I encourage you all to attend that. It was absolutely the most enlightening meeting I have been at in a very long time. I was not aware, I don't have a lot of young people in my life, and I was not aware how difficult our police department has, our sheriff's department, Caltrans, I'm sorry, CHP, our schools have. It was, they're going to have another meeting. It's going to be well-publicized. I appreciate if you will show up, especially if you're a parent. I appreciate Captain McLaughlin giving parents their permission to be parents, to say, look at your children's cell, your children's cell phones. Look and see what's on it. Read what's there. Understand what they're talking about. Understand the words that you may not understand. And I never heard so many words for different drugs in my entire life. But as a 70-year-old, I learned a lot. And I appreciate our police department and what they do. It was phenomenal, and I, please, 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 the next meeting that's called, please attend. Okay, any other council announcements or comments?
I have one, Madam Mayor. And that's on the 28th of April at 1:00 at the animal shelter. They will have the animal shelter groundbreaking ceremony for the cat room.
Should be exciting. Cat shelter. Michael Mauer.
You made me blessed with that.
Y'all didn't hear it, did he have his honor?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Turn it off. Okay. Any other council announcements?
I have one. The Love in Action, they came and gave us those yellow bags. They are doing some home repairs at 128 South Silver Ridge on Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00. They want to fix up this home in our town so it's temporary transitional housing for families in need. And so if you'd like to go out and support them, you can go on Facebook and find the contact number for that. But I'm sure they would love as much assistance as they could get, so. And I believe they're partnering with our police department on that as well.
Sir? Okay, now we will go to public comments. I read it all to you. Is there any other, do I need to read it again? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment?
I'm Tex Hoppus. I am currently the president of the Board of Directors of the Historical Society of the Upper Mojave Desert and I honor and respect your duties as you carry them out for our You have the honor and the responsibility for governing this city and I want to remind you all that the city's origins started one block to our north on Ridgecrest Boulevard when in, right at the end of World War II, there was a USO club built and opened for military and civilian and it quickly became this city's center of activity, including the governance. The Town Committee, as it was called then, started in that building, meeting. The Chamber of Commerce was incorporated while in that building and they had an office, in fact, in the southeast corner. After a couple of years, that building was changed in ownership. Kern County took it because nationally we were closing USO clubs. The war was over and they didn't think they needed them. They were wrong. The county had the building for 30 years. While there, in the early 50s, they wanted to open up a justice court in that building and Judge Thompson was going to be the judge. We had a small court out in Inukern at the time, but he would not open up the court in that building until it had a jail nearby. So in 1954, they built a jail. It has three cells and that is on the same property. In about the same time period, the call firemen, volunteers, built a, the county built a firehouse there and two engine houses, the Quansits, that are on Station Street. In 2010, the Historical Society, which now owned that property, acquired and moved a building that was a one-room schoolhouse built in 1905 in Isabella. It had come into Ridgecrest in 1955 and the city had that until 2010 when they were going to get rid of it. The Historical Society said, if we move it, can we have it? Yes. We have restored that building to the look that it had in 1905 and we have made it this region's only veterans memorial building. Now, why do I bring that up? Please mark this down, this is the reason I'm here. On Saturday, May the 6th, that's the day after Cinco de Mayo, so that would make the Seis de Mayo, the Historical Society is opening up all of those buildings and we're going to have people there that have had some experience in those buildings. We are going to have a lunch of tri-tip, et cetera. It would be inappropriate for me to offer a free visit for this. It is a small fundraiser, but for the small price of $15, you can come down between 11 and 3:00 on that day and see where Ridgecrest's origins are. I hope that you all make it, I'd love to see you. If you're all there at the same time, it would be an honor to get a picture of all of you together on the stage in the historic USO building. That's where Ridgecrest Civics began. One other quick note while I have your attention, the Historical Society hosts a veterans breakfast for all veterans and their spouses, guardians, partners, et cetera, the third Thursday of every month. That means that tomorrow morning from 8:00 to 10:00, we will have veterans all the way from World War II up to current for a free breakfast. You're also welcome to attend those. I think our citizens, our veterans would love to see the city there. Thank you.
Thank you, Tex.
Good evening, I am Stan Ratora. I have two topics tonight, I'll try to keep them brief. Both of them came out of the Finance Committee meeting that we had, I believe, on last Monday. I hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder who was there, but I wanted to make sure that somebody mentioned these in case somebody else wasn't going to. The first topic was, we learned at the Finance Committee meeting that the Finance Committee would not be able to talk about the budget until after it was presented in May or June or whenever it is. And that's because we still have not modified the ordinance that has been around for quite a while, that says that nobody but the city manager can develop the budget. My feeling is that that's archaic, it's old. If we want the city council involved in the budget, the Finance Committee is the right place for it. We need to modify the ordinance. I think it might take the city attorney as much as five minutes to rewrite one sentence in the city ordinance to allow the Finance Committee to do their job. My feeling is it is the Finance Committee's job regardless of what the ordinance says, so I would like to see the council take action on getting that done. It should have been done when we, in my opinion, of course, it should have been done when we established the Finance Committee, but it wasn't. So the sooner we can get that done, the better off we'll be. Thank you. Second topic is, has to do with the internet sales tax. I believe that's something that the mayor put on the agenda a couple months or two or three ago. We had an excellent brief, or somebody found a brief from the League of California Cities that shows basically why we aren't getting our share of the sales tax. We pay sales tax money in, that is, our local area does, and lo and behold, we don't get that amount of sales tax back. And it's actually not only the internet sales, but it's also apparently a good deal of car sales as well. Basically, we're not getting 30% of the dollars that we send to the state, which is basically $1.1 million that we could be getting if we actually got our share. That would be a 44% increase over what we currently get and I think we would all admit that we could do a lot with $1.1 million. I heard a lot of reasons at the meeting why it would be difficult to get that money. And quite frankly, I thought the agenda item was, how do we get the money, not, why can't we get the money? And so I would like to see the council step up and actually push to get us the money. This is actually money that we pay in. It's not, it's not asking for money that somebody else is paying in. It's our, it's the sales tax money that is being collected in our area. My feeling is that regardless of what the state of California says, there ought to be a number of other communities like ourselves that are being cheated on the sales tax and we need to push for it. The DOE, can't even think what the name stands for, the, oh, I'm sorry, BOE, the Board of Equalization, put out a report that actually said what groups would gain and what groups would lose. So a lot of the work is already being done. We know who, besides ourselves, will benefit from modifying the tax laws to give us our share of funding. They can do it, the state can do it, for the Measure L funds, we're getting our full allotment of Measure L funds, we're getting 100%. Unfortunately, on the rest of it, we're only getting 70%. And I would like to see the issue actually be not, not just try to figure out why we can't get it, but let's see how we can get our share of money that's collected here, bring it back to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Hi, Christina Witt. My grandmother, who has passed, but is a survivor of breast cancer, so I feel what you're going through. And I had prepared something, but the tenor changed. For one, I was happy to see you reference this, that made me very happy. However, last meeting, I asked a question and I felt it was legitimate. It was legitimate and I felt that I was under attack when I was accused of asking the question with malicious intent, when it wasn't, it was an honest question. In that, I let my head get hot, I let my judgment go to bay and I allowed my temper to take control. When I was called back to the podium after I had left, I was even more infuriated. And my behavior is inexcusable. I cannot make excuses. It was where, you know, I should have let cooler heads prevail and I failed and I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dave Matthews, is this mic on, working?
Yes.
Because some of the comments were very hard to hear. Also, make sure you guys catch your mic up there because there were some comments that just weren't being heard out here. Now, I respect the rules of the public comment that you reiterated again. That's always been the way it is. However, I think I heard you say that you were going to limit to five minutes discussion or comment, public comment, on items on the agenda. That has never been the rule.
I did not say that, if I did, I misspoke.
Okay, well, that's what I heard and I just wanted to clarify that, make sure that that was not the case. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, can you hear me okay?
You got to get closer.
Get closer. All right. So, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I was under the impression that I was only going to have three minutes to speak, so I wrote everything down to try to condense it down, so you'll be glad to know that I won't take close to five minutes, so.
Thank you.
All right. So, my name is Steve Franco. First of all, I'm with a company by the name of Y-Green Energy Fund. We are a PACE finance company and I'm here today to request the consideration for approval of our Y-Green Works program here in the city of Ridgecrest. Y-Green Works allows commercial and residential property owners to make energy efficient, renewable energy, and water conservation upgrades to their property with 100% non-credit-based financing, zero cash out-of-pocket, and no payments for up to 29 months, therefore allowing property owners to realize significant savings before any payment is due to them. If a property owner has a minimum of 10% equity, they're current on their mortgage payment, their property taxes, as well as, and they are not currently in bankruptcy, we can approve work to be completed by a state-licensed, Y-Green-certified contractor that is well-vetted and trained to use our products with stringent consumer protections in place. Our program has additional protections in place to ensure that our loan does not put any property owner into a negative equity position. Once a project is completed to the satisfaction of a property owner, we fund the contractor for the work that has been completed and our financing ultimately becomes a mellow ruse property tax.
Sir?
Yes?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
We were talking about items under which we have jurisdiction.
Okay.
I don't know that we have jurisdiction under this.
Okay. Is that finance?
Well, the city itself does have, I mean, it arguably falls within the jurisdiction, but if you can wrap it up, I'd appreciate it.
I didn't catch any of that, sorry.
Did you hear that?
No.
Hello? Okay. Well, the jurisdiction of the...
Wow, you're going to have to wait for the asylum.
I'll walk right over there.
Okay. Well, I mean, we're trying to limit the jurisdiction to matters that the city, city council actually can take action on. I don't think this is necessarily one of those.
Okay.
I mean, it arguably falls within the jurisdiction of something the council can discuss in general, but no decision can be made because it's not agendized as well, so.
Okay, so who do we, who do I need to present this to? Because it does become...
Would you make, give the information to our city manager?
Sure.
And he can distribute it to the committee as necessary and needed and so you can get an answer because I don't want to waste your time and say, now we ignored it.
No, that's okay.
So if you would give that information, it's a, it sounds like to me it's a sales pitch.
Well, it's all of our, we're in 246 cities and communities throughout California, all of them had to go through city council to be voted in.
Okay, well, then, let's, let's give the information to our city manager, Dennis, and that way we can go, go from there, okay?
Got it.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay. Mike?
Good evening, Council. Mike Neal. First short subject here, I saw a petition today on Facebook concerning need to get a, some kind of traffic control at Bowman and Downs Street. This, of course, was prompted after the recent accident. I've been in there a number of times, I don't think I have to...
Where, sir?
Bowman, Bowman and Downs.
Bowman and Downs.
Needs to be traffic controlled. So I'm asking the city manager, Public Works, look at what they can do with that. I've been down there a number of times and I believe there's at least an issue of visual, you know, sights, line of sight that you need to be able to see the cars coming. There may have been some improvements to that, but, you know, we've had discussions about this, but, you know, we need to pursue this, I believe. The next item, I'm going to hand the council a one-page documentation, I'm going to hand what I've got to the city clerk for the record after I'm done. And for your comfort, Madam Mayor, this concerns an item that the city has both funded, pursued and funded for the last three years.
Thank you, sir.
And this, of course, is the case of the city, Ridgecrest versus Mr. Dale Howard. What you're looking at is one page from a multi-page document that's filed with the court and is going to be heard on May the 1st. Basically, the motion is to approve the sale of Mr. Howard's property, not with his consent for certain, and to order him vacated from his property. I'll read you some excerpts from this particular page from the report of the receiver. It says, there's a company, the acronym is GDFRJ, who made, they made a loan to pursue this action on the property, which I might note appeared to all purposes to be basically invented by the receiver so they could incur more costs upon his receivership in tearing down a house that could have been rebuilt and retained on the property tax roll. In any case, they ended up buying their own loan instrument at the trustee's sale because nobody else showed up, wanted to have anything to do with it, apparently. After that, they went into action to sell it. So by the, what I'm going to say, not-so-kind actions of Colwell Banker Realty to serve as agent and Indian Wells Valley Construction, who is apparently willing to buy their neighbor's property out from under them like this, Mr. Howard's house proper will be sold for $85,000. The other house on the property is 17 and the other lots, which there are now, let's say there's 11, 10, would make that $3,000 apiece. So they're asking the court to confirm the sale and then they go on to say, additional to the sales order, we request the court issue an order directing William Howard and any of their occupants to vacate the property. It says he cannot complete the sale contract without a vacated property and for this reason he wants them to order them to get out. If you look at other language in the motion, which is a, I don't know, 89-page document, so I didn't think I should try to bring that up here, but I will make that available. It was a 25-megabyte file, seems to be, by Mr. Howard. Anybody who wants to see it, I'll make it available to you. Just get, just get in touch with me if you want to look it over. They basically, you know, Mr. Howard is so recalcitrant that they think he's going to have to be drug out of the house by force, essentially, saying he's not going to vacate... have to be drug out of the house by force, essentially, saying he's not going to vacate. So now we're actually looking at a gentleman who was in his property, city was willing to spend $700,000 of our tax money. You know, they could have just paid him way less than that, bought him out and got him out of there, but that wouldn't have actually accomplished the agenda. So now we get to see our city persecute an elderly couple, force them out of their house against their will, and other people in the process apparently are gonna get to profit from this. The city is certainly not gonna profit from this. We're gonna, we're gonna have this black stain on our record. I've made sure that plenty of people know about it. There will be more letters to the editor, postings on Facebook and so forth because for three years I've asked for some assistance, plead on their behalf, and basically nothing has happened. This has just gotten to this point. All in the face of all this time, city, certain city officials have said, "We don't wanna kick, we don't wanna take Mr. Howard's property." Well, I don't know what else you could possibly call this. So yes, apparently they did wanna take his property because they're allowing this to happen. There's never been one single motion filed with the court for any kind of mercy on this.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Any other public? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Elaine Need and I'd like to touch just a little bit on the item that was pulled from the agenda concerning the groundwater authority workshop that will be coming up next week.
The 26th at 5:30 at Spring Hill.
Yes, that's the one. My, my concern is, has this council had time to review and discuss the new bylaw that is being presented, Article 5? And if not, will that Article 5 come back to the board for approval before it's voted on by the representative?
We have not discussed it and yes, it will come back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Madam Mayors, members of the city council, my name is Stephen Morgan, 729 North Inyo Street. And for anybody on the television audience or in this audience today, no, I did not give the mayor a Steve Morgan pill. Although I could be accused of that. A couple of things I wanted to touch on for the council's knowledge. You, you will be receiving some information from, through me, from Mr. Hillier on a history of pilt. That's a conversation, a topic of conversation you have had. We, there is an effort to better understand the program. Hopefully, the information we'll be giving you will help you with that. And also, there's gonna be a draft letter for board members that can be sent to congressional representatives to help secure, hopefully, long-term funding for pilt and for the Secure Rural Schools program. I'll be, I'll be giving that to you and hopefully you'll decide to make a decision to support and send letters. Also, just to be aware, please watch very carefully in your determination whether you would like to send a letter or not referencing Endangered Species Act. There is an effort to modify that act that would greatly assist all cities and counties, something that you may wish to chime in on and I will be keeping you informed of that as well. Finally, in keeping with the items that can be worked, addressed by the council, the Ridgecrest Lions Club is utilizing the Kermagie Center on May 20th for a bingo fundraiser and the Lions Club annually has paid full cost for that facility. And councils continually credit or allow use of Kermagie for community events at no charge. I am here to formally request from the Ridgecrest Lions Club that we be allowed to either have a discount or be able to use the Kermagie Center at no charge as we are providing funds, the sole source of providing funds, raising money for the community fireworks display, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, no other public comment? Okay, the next item is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, that item may be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Do any members of the council wish to have items polled? I'm going to read them. Item num...
We were both ready to speak.
We're all saying five, right?
We're all saying five.
Five, okay. We're gonna poll five.
And six.
And six, okay. I'm gonna read them. Item number two, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Special Close Session Meeting dated March 29, 2017. Item number three, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Meeting dated April 5. The number four, proposed action to approve a resolution approving the program supplemental agreement of FO1, I'm sorry, FO41 with the State of California Department of Transportation under Master Agreement Number 095385F15 that encovers $8,477 of matching funds already allocated by Resolution Number 1720 and authorizing the city manager or his designee to sign the program supplemental agreement for preliminary engineering on the Sunland Street project from Bowman to Dolphin. I'm going to skip five and six since those items have been asked and item number...
That's it.
That's it. Okay. So is there a motion to approve or poll any of those other items by the council or the public? Okay, a motion to approve then, items number two, three, and four.
Second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Braden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. Okay, it appears everybody wanted to pull item number five. So Dennis, can you address that?
Oh, what, what is the question?
My, my question is, you stated earlier at the beginning of the meeting, this was so we can start the process for state funding. Is that correct? Is that the reason?
Well, that, that's true as well. We, we need to complete the environmental process.
But I don't wanna give up the council's authority to choose which, ultimately which site.
That's what this allows us to do. This, 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 notice the determination. It'd be a determination by council that you found both sites.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, ultimately, I want the council to decide which site it is.
Well, that's correct. This, this does nothing to, to take away that decision capability of the council.
Okay, that's, that was my clarification.
When are we making that decision?
Well, that's, I think we're down to the, to the, a short timeframe because as, you know, as has been requested by council, we have responded to the Navy. Now, we're waiting for their response back. If that respond, and I've already spoken with Congressman McCarthy's office, and if they're off, if they're, if their comments are not in our best interest, in other words, if they're not to the point of being, of offering that easement that we need so that we can move forward with funding and the other things, then I will make one more phone call because I've already given a heads-up to Congressman McCarthy's office. They said that they would intervene. If the Navy doesn't follow through, then I'm gonna make that additional call. If the congressman, for whatever reason, is unsuccessful, then I'm gonna report back to council that it appears that we're not gonna be able to receive an easement from the Navy and then the council can, at that time, elect to, you know, which site they wanna choose.
So I still actually have concerns that, I don't know if I agree that the Navy site is the best site and that's what I had asked for more information on is because like Mr. Holloway at the last meeting pointed out, we lose our tax exempt status as well as some of the funding and financing options looked as though they may be different if we...
Well, it just depends what we, how we end up with financing. If we actually are able to receive 100% in the state, safe, the state revolving fund, then it wouldn't matter which site you choose. If you go out to bond, yes, there is an issue. If we were actually to issue bonds, then it would be, we would not be able to sell tax-exempt bonds based on what we know in terms of the Navy's usage of the facility.
Are there any hidden deadlines that we may not be aware of that would cause us to have to make a quick decision on, on this, Dennis?
Well, as far as, as this decision, this decision actually would have ordinarily been made in conjunction with the certification of the IR that occurred last summer, but the reason it wasn't a part of that is there was an expectation that the Navy would by this time have actually provided the requested easement, but they haven't. So we need to complete the environmental, this part of the environmental process that'll put us in a position that irrespective of the Navy's decision, we can move forward. Well, we hope that we are able to receive the easement, but that's still to be determined.
And when you say move forward, do you mean enter into the line for the state revolving fund? Is that what you're...
Oh, that, they were, we were told by the state when we met with them in, in last August that this is a prerequisite. We have to have a, we have to have a site specific because they can't consider an application that we haven't determined a site on.
So even though we have two sites, that's okay?
No, not for them. We can't reapproach them until we've determined which site.
I guess one of the concerns, I'm sorry if I interrupted anybody, I guess one of the concerns I have is that we have waited, I think, as you pointed out rightfully last time, 12 years for the Navy to respond and, and I'm not...
Since 2012.
Since 2012. It's been five years.
All right, five years, okay. And we recognize it isn't our Navy at San Diego that we're waiting to hear from. Captain Dale was here, said he will get some answers for us. Have we followed up?
Well, I was, I was actually expecting that maybe I would hear from San Diego after he had made the call, but I have not talked to Captain Dale, no. My communication is with the, is with San Diego.
If, if we make a selection based on, or approval based on the potential for two sites, we have not cornered ourselves to any site.
No.
We can make our decision, our applica, our, our decision based on, it can go either way.
That's, that's correct and that's the reason we initially set up and the, the environmental document was, was a bifurcated environmental document so that there was a study, a separate study done for either, either sites.
My problem is, is the longer we delay this, the more it's costing.
Yeah, that's correct.
And we need to make a decision. We need to make a time-specific decision here this year, as far as I'm concerned. We've gotta get moving.
No, I agree with that.
Well, and it seemed to me like at the infrastructure committee, I felt like the infrastructure committee felt pretty strongly it should be at the city site. Is that the interpretation that you've got because of the hassle that we've been dealing with, with the passes, as well as the, the concerns with the easement and all of that and the financing percentages? I just, it seemed to me like, it seemed like they all thought that the city site would be the better site of the two. And I'm just not really clear then on why we're taking this step. If it's not so that we can enter into the line for the state funding, what is the purpose of this?
Well, it's the most, the city site is probably the most expedient site, but as far as from a functional standpoint and from capital cost standpoint, the Navy's would be because there wouldn't be no need for an interceptor sewer line. There would be no need for lift stations. It would be a gravity flow system and you've got your, your, your treatment and your disposal basins already built. They're already situated there at the, at the Navy property. But the trick is, is we have to have an equivalent of a, as far as a, the ability, we have to have, quote, and this is from our bond counsel, "A real property interest" and that's what a 50-year easement would do for us, but we haven't seen it yet.
Have we given them a timeframe? Can we write a letter to the captain?
Oh.
And say, "We want an answer in 30 days"?
Well, the captain can't give an answer, but I can't ask the captain if, if he has what his status is and if he could intervene because I've been dealing directly with the legal department there in San Diego.
Can we just issue a letter to the legal department in San Diego saying 30 days?
But they have no, I mean, I guess we can, but I guess they don't have any fiscal interest
They don't.
That this Navy has. And I think we need to talk to our partners, our community, and say, "Now, you've had, all right, five years. You've had five years. We want an answer in 30 days. Do what you can to help us. If not, we'll assume you either can't or are unwilling or whatever."
No, I, I will contact Captain Dale then, but it's kind of more of a request because we have a whole different relationship with the base across the street. They've been very supportive. They, in fact, sent the initial letter to begin this process back in 2012, I think it was, but they have, they apparently have really no control over Southwest Command in San Diego. But I can make that contact with Captain Dale.
Has Kevin McCarthy's office contacted?
I need, well, I gave them a heads-up that where we were at and that, that we weren't, we didn't feel that, we, we felt that we may not get the answer we want when we, when they, when they do respond after we made that last middle. And Kyle Lombardi said that, no, he would definitely would, would contact Southwest Command directly if, if that response wasn't positive. But if, I can make a call to Kyle to, that it's been a while and if he could just kinda get involved at this point.
Yeah, my, my concern is, is we get an answer back that doesn't work. So then Kevin McCarthy's office gets involved. Then we, now we got another three or four months down the road and it just keeps dragging on and on. And we're gonna be down another five years before we make a decision and then it's gonna cost us $20,000 more or $20 million more.
I'll call Kyle tomorrow and get a email off to, to Captain Dale then.
Okay.
So is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, council. I've been at almost all those infrastructure meetings and I'd also echo the impression that the appears to be the best site is the city site for a number of reasons. And so I'm just gonna start off by recommending that the council move in that direction. It gives us more control of our own destiny, number one, and you can see how it goes when we don't. Here we are after waiting five years. Well, you know, normally when I wait for somebody more than about a year or two, I'm through waiting. I'm, I'm gonna do something and I'm gonna say, "I don't care what you think. Now, you know, you've had your chance." I mean, I don't care what kind of bureaucracy you're talking to. Five years, it just says, they're, they're like, you know, thumbing their nose at us and saying, you know, "Oh, I don't know, you know, if we get to it in the next 10, we'll get back to you." Well, fine. It's like, so what, I'm gonna suggest that, and, and one of the things you said, Madam Mayor, prompted this, was let, let's make a timeline. And let's say, pick a, pick a, you know, reasonable drop-dead date, not very far in the future, and say, "This is when the decision's going to get made" and then line out all the things that need to happen between now and then. And now, obviously, I'm talking to the infrastructure committee meetings. Mr. Mauer, paying attention?
Okay.
I, I will make one comment. When I had my coffee with the council, two months ago now, I guess it's been, there were a few residents in that area that really don't want the sewer plant out in their neighborhood.
Yeah, they're very adamant about that.
Obviously, okay, that, that's, that's something that goes on and, and you, so what you got, you know, is the next thing I was talking about is you have a decision matrix, okay? And you lay out the criteria and, you know, I think I've talked about this before and you, and you put weightings on all the various parts of the decision, okay? And it's, you know, it's really not, it sounds real scientific, but it's not, it's not difficult and it's not complicated at all, but it gets it all out on paper, on a document. It makes it actually pretty easy for you to put it all down and go, "Oh, look at that. This decision gets, you know, 85% here" and it's, it's well above all of the possibilities. So obviously, that's one that, that we go with. And, and so, you know, you do that and then you just, and like I say, with, with a drop-dead... And, and so, you know, you do that, and then you just, and like I say, with, with a drop-dead date, then you get there and you say, "All right, we're here, now, you know, what has happened?" In the meantime, of course, your, your staff is, feels a little bit of reasonable pressure to take various actions, and, and those could even be listed out, you know, as to who's going to call on your behalf, who's going to put pressure on, you know, the regional, you know, Navy entity on your behalf. I suggest that you, you members on the IWV EDC, you go talk to them about it, you know, this is in, they're intimately connected, from what I understand, with the China Lake Alliance, which is, gives huge support to the base and ought to have a little bit of voice in saying, you know, "Let's, let's get this problem resolved here, this, you know, we've heard it over and over again, you know, this is costing the city money, this is costing the city money." Well, as I understand, we don't have money to lose here in this city. I mean, I realize the wastewater fund is treated like a giant slush fund, and we think it's, you know, a bottomless pit, but it's not, and the people in this town have had their sewer rates increased three times in order to help fund this, so they deserve the justice of, of getting this thing done. And I also believe, and maybe Mr. Rettora could, could you comment, I think he told me that if we do the city site, that even though it has been said it will cost more to build it on that site, that we, at the same time, save money that we have to spend to, to, you know, do the site on the Navy site, so there's some, there's some definite offset as far as just the, the bottom line cost of building the site at the city location. And then, you know, if you look at the financing difficulties and what it may or may not cost us, you know, at a certain point, you have to say, "Okay, fine, if we do it now, you know, we're just going to have to bond for it instead of waiting for this, you know, gift from the sky, this rolling fun from the state," which, you know, that's another thing that may not happen, and you're not, you're going to have to decide, we don't wait on it past a certain point, and just go ahead and lay out plan and then, so we can get it done.
Thank you, sir.
Stan Rettora. Mr. Neal is absolutely right, there are some offset costs where I think there would be some money saved if we actually looked into it. There's a $5.5 million cost for, for putting in a new sewer line that, as far as I'm concerned, is a Navy sewer line, not a Ridgecrest sewer line, that you wouldn't need if it was going to be a, a city-alone operation if we put the lift sites in, as Mr. Spear mentioned. There's also cost savings associated with using tertiary in recycling water that hasn't actually been discussed to any serious measure at this point in time. Back in October, our consultant suggested that we get busy on the planning for the tertiary and the recycling because until we hit a cus, have a customer, we're not going to be able to get in line for the 1% loans that are available, and we're not going to be able to get in line for the 50% grants that are available. So, I think we need to take an in-depth look at what the cost offsets really are because I'm not convinced that the amount of money that right now is being stated as being the difference in the cost between the Navy site and the city site are, are really the correct ones. I mean, I, I have always stated that there is some benefit to being on the Navy site, but again, you got to remember that as only a value, having a partner is great if the partner pays his share of the cost. If he's not going to pay his share of the cost anyway, it's, it's going to be a burden on the citizens of Ridgecrest totally anyway. So, we really need to look at the big picture and, and not just small little parts dab at a time, we need to put it together. And, and so, I totally concur with Mr. Neal. We have not taken an in-depth look at all of the issues. And, and by the way, the, I, I understand the, the desire for the, some of the people living in that area not wanting it to be there. However, if we do recycling and tertiary, the ponds, which have always been the problem in the past, for all practical purposes, will be much smaller or not exist, depending upon how we actually do the recycling. And, and we also need to look at the synergism between the tertiary and the secondary, and that's been ignored as well. I mean, there's some initial discussion, but we've never actually seriously looked at what it's going to do for us. So, there's a lot of work to be done, but, but obviously, we need to make a decision. If, I don't believe the cost has gone up 15% in the last two years, but it doesn't matter. It, it has gone up some and it's continuing to go up, so we need to get that started. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dave Matthews, Stan, you kind of stole some of my thunder here. Yeah, I was going to point out that at the current site, there's four, five, maybe six percolation ponds, and...
Yeah, there's one more than that.
There's 10.
10.
I'm sorry?
There's 10.
Really? Wow.
But four of them, I think, are totally empty right now.
That's correct.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to point out that unless we do tertiary right to start at the Ridgecrest site, we don't have the real estate out there to do that many ponds. So, you know, there's, there's, there's that to consider if we stay with, on the Navy site versus the, the Ridgecrest site. So, thank you.
That's why I think we're going to do, no, that's why I know we're going to do an in-depth analysis of both sites and what we can do. Okay, is there any other counsel comment?
So, did we say a drop-dead date for...
I was, I was going to make a motion to approve item five with a stipulation that this be on the agenda at one month, second, second meeting of May, so we can discuss a go-forward time. If we haven't got any response from San Diego or from Kevin McCarthy's office coming the second meeting of May, I think we got to make a decision.
That's fair.
Second, that.
So, we're approving this with both sites? Is that the motion you're making?
We're approving with both sites, but with the stipulation we...
Get it, yeah, okay.
We put it on the agenda, second meeting of May.
Sort of second?
Aye, I second it.
Good. Any other comment? Okay.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Braden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, number six.
I wanted to clarify, we've had several discussions in infrastructure about a property up on Collard Heights and that we've been collecting taxes on it but haven't done the landscaping, maintenance. Is that what this is for?
Counselwoman, no, this is a final map approval for one of the phases in a track that is known as 6775. It's phase one. This is simply the approval of that final map to allow the developer to have sales of lots.
Okay. All right.
But part of it was based on the discussion that we had with that initial project that Lindsay was referring to, correct?
Well, we do have a, we have two...
The land, the, the...
Assessment districts.
Assessment district, thank you.
Yes, we have two assessment districts that this project is involved within.
Right.
Your very first assessment district is 2012-1, which is the lighting landscaping maintenance district for the Horton Track landscaping and the lighting for that track. This project also participates in that very same assessment district, only as a, a separate zone. It's been annexed as a zone. And it also is participating in the special assessment benefit district for the drainage facilities in that area.
I, so I thought Track Mac approval was generally done through the Planning Commission, so why is this a special case?
The tentative map is through the Planning Commission. The final map is required to go before City Council.
Okay.
What is the status of, I get complaints all the time.
Right.
Yeah, we, we have...
And I drove up there today because I thought we had none of the control, and it is worse now. I mean, you can't even hardly see the plants from the weeds down up there right now.
We have a contractor that we have just issued a P O for him to proceed with that maintenance. We had solicited services, we've selected the lowest responsible proposer, been in the process of getting the purchase order approved, and, and we are now ready to issue the notice to proceed for him.
So, that should be...
Yes, sir.
...getting fixed here soon.
Is that a local company?
It is, it is not, no. We did solicit locally, and we, the proposals that we received, the successful proposer was Elite Landscaping, and they are, they are out of the city.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Any other public comment? Okay, motion?
I'm with approval of item six.
Second.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Braden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
All right, number eight, Councilwoman Stevens, do you want to talk to us about that?
Yes, just a moment. I have a presentation. So, as an introduction, the Quality of Life Committee at the April 4th meeting, we reviewed the Upjohn Pearson Parks that were initially bid several months ago. The bids came in ranging between 562,000 and 720,000 to redo both of those parks. We had to reject all bids because of an oversight, but in that process, I, I found another method of doing parks projects where you do a purchase order option, and basically what it does is it eliminates the bid process, which saves money, and you directly go with a parks equipment manufacturer, and so you can do that. So, we got three different parks manufacturers to give us bids on redoing the two parks. And so, on April 4th, the Quality of Life Committee reviewed all three bids. One of the companies came up and made a presentation. This is part of their presentation, and this is who actually ended up coming in the cheapest as well as seemed to have very good quality equipment, and so this is who the Quality of Life Committee would like to approve, to see approve the purchase order from. So, first, which button, this one?
The right one, yes, only. I point it.
Point it.
Towards the booth.
Not moving. It might be out of batteries because there's no lights coming on. Sorry. I don't think it's working because the light's not coming on. Sorry, bear with us for a moment.
Maybe you could share with us how, how you came upon this proposal while we're waiting, do you mind?
Sure. As you all remember, I like to do a lot of research. And so, I started looking up playground equipment costs because as I looked at the bids, I thought it seemed like we were paying a lot and not getting a lot. And so, I came across this company and, and found how much the equipment actually costs and thought, gee, we're sure paying a lot more than that price. And so, I contacted the company, and they informed me of these purchasing contracts. I then found out that Tehachapi had just used one of those purchasing contracts to do their park called Central Park. And I actually have friends who drive to Tehachapi regularly just to go play at that park because they enjoy it so much. So, through that process, that's how I found out that we could do this purchasing contract option. And it actually, this company is 100% employee-owned, the 95% to 100% of the equipment is made in America. Their structures have a life expectancy of 20 to 30 years. They also have a very big guarantee policy where if something breaks, they will replace the whole part, and it just sounds like their customer service is phenomenal. These are a couple examples of parks. There's 13 and 15 years old that they've done in California. These two are over 20 years old, and as you can tell, they're still in very good shape. One of the benefits we liked about this company was they have an option for retrofitting. So, once you have those poles installed, they can come in, and if you see the difference, they can reuse the poles and recoat them and just replace all the slides and equipment. So, next time we need to redo our parks, it will be much cheaper to do it because the poles are the expensive part because they have to pour concrete foundations and everything. And they've never changed their systems on how it hooks up, so you can always reuse the poles. As you can see, it looks like a brand-new playground, but it's actually, was done very inexpensively. So, these are the, the designs for Pearson Park that they came up with. There's several different features listed there. Those are kind of their, their terms of the special equipment. As you can see here, there'll be shade structures over the park. There's two different play areas, there's a three-to-five play area, and then there's a five-and-up play area. So, the bottom corner is the younger area, and then the top one is the older kids' area. There's also this little green bowl thing, that's called an inclusive spinner. It is fully handicap accessible, that's part of why we're doing this project, is so that our parks can be more readily available. This other thing over here on the bottom now is called a cruiser, and the kids can stand on the platform, and then you sit down on this, and it zooms up to the other platform. They said that in other cities, this has been the most popular item at their parks. So, as you can see, this is all of the Pearson Park with shade and structure, shade structures included over the playground equipment. There's a little rope bridge that they can play on and climb different ways, and so we just really like this design. Upjohn has some different features included on it. They also have the shade included, they have one of the inclusive spinners, but this slide over here in the, over there on the edge with the two kids sliding down it, that's a roller slide, and it's basically comprised of all different rollers. And so, as they go down, they're going down these rollers that all spin, and they said that those are really popular slides. So, you can see it up closer a little bit, you can kind of see the little rollers on it. So, each park kind of has some different equipment so that people can get two different place, places, experiences. So, and it also has the smaller play area and the older kid play area with new swings.
What is the life expectancy of the covers? What, what are they made out of, the shade thing?
The covers, I don't know exactly, I can't remember the life expectancy of that. I know that they said that they would choose special covers that are more durable for the winds that we experience here, and they can offer replacement covers. I wanted to, do you remember seven years?
I thought you said it was 10 years.
10 years, okay, yeah.
But she...
But you just have to replace the actual fabric part once that part goes, it's not the whole structure, it's so. So, so this is the, the costs that we are looking at at this time. We're still ironing out a few minor details, and so that's why we're asking for the purchase order of not to exceed amount of 500,000 because we have still a few things that were minor details. But as you can see, this gives a breakdown of each park's cost, and because of the purchasing contract, which is this H D A C, you get an 8% discount. And so, you can see right now, the total projected cost estimate is $485,000, so.
Now, the bids that we went out to were, were really high, did they include anything besides equipment, or were they strictly replacing the equipment?
So, this is all of the, so the, part of the other issue is, right now, the park is sand, and that is not an ADA-compliant surfacing material. And so, the projects all include new surfacing as well, and so this would be wood chips, but I call it wood chips, engineered wood fiber, that's up at Petrogliff Park, that's the ADA-compliant surfacing.
That's included in this price?
That's included in the... That's included in this price. This includes installation, equipment and everything and this is their certified installer who only installs their equipment versus the bid process would be a contractor who would be purchasing the equipment and not a certified installer. So that helps with the, um, warranty, I guess, of the facility as well.
Getting a bit of glass or anything like that. Clean it out. Thought you were gonna say.
Speaking here.
I thought you was gonna say something in reference to the wood chips, in reference to the maintenance of how we would do it.
Right.
And the reason why.
At, at one point, they had looked at rubber surfacing, but the rubber surfacing cost is substantially higher and the lifespan is only five to seven years. So when we reevaluated this, all three playground manufacturing companies said that they recommended for our climate, the wood fiber because of the heat and it breaks down so much faster and it can cost a hundred thousand dollars every five years to replace. And so I didn't think that was being very fiscally responsible. So the wood chips, we could replace that five times over and still not be at the cost of the rubber. So that's why we went with that option and it is ADA compliant. And Tehachapi actually had rubber at their park that they just replaced and ripped it out and went with the wood fiber themselves, so.
In, in the discussion of comparing this with the other, we didn't reject the bids because they were too high, the other bids, but because there was an error in the bidding process. Did we get more for this or were there, because there is such a huge difference in price, was it the amount of equipment, the, the, the quality of the equipment? What was, made it, other than it was just cheaper, is that the difference?
We actually had the same companies whose equipment was specced in the bid process bid and they came out the highest. But their warranty policies, all three companies have the same warranty policy for their equipment. So we don't believe that we're sacrificing quality here and we're actually getting more quantity wise than what we were getting before. It's just that this cost is going directly to the playground manufacturer as opposed to a contractor buying the equipment and marking it up and then installing it and traveling here. We don't have to deal with any of those extra costs. So, um, and I must have accidentally taken out. I thought there was a power, a slide on length of time too. Let me look here, see if I got these out of order.
Are you asking for us to approve this tonight based on those quotes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a slide missing for some reason. But the estimated timeline of this project would be, um, once the purchase order is finalized and approved, the equipment manufacturing time, they manufacture two orders. So the equipment's not sitting on a shelf stored somewhere aging. They make it as we order it. So it's three to four weeks to manufacture it. Shipping time is one week, two weeks for each playground installation. So estimated total max time would be ten weeks. So we could see these parks done by July.
So ninety days max, basically.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know what happened to that slide, but as I mentioned, we were looking at some final touches. We wanted to look, I don't know if you've been out there lately, but the benches are in bad shape. So at the last meeting, we asked them to give us larger shade structures on the equipment and so they've been working on getting those costs for us finalized so that we can see how much is left over to do some of the bench replacement at the parks as well.
Do they do the benches also?
They do do the benches as well. This is some, this is, they use this company, do more site furnishings, um, to do benches. And they also do the shade structure if, um, you want to do a large picnic area.
Go, go back a couple of slides, would you please?
Yeah.
I want to see that one bench.
That one.
No, further, further, one more, one more.
This one?
That's a nice looking bench there in the corner, isn't it?
The one in the bottom left? And they're the same price as this one up here on the top?
I don't know what prices they are. They just wanted to show the different examples of the seating elements that are available from them, so.
You're already at four eighty-five and you're looking at maybe larger covers and stuff like that?
No, the four eighty-five includes the larger covers. We just got that price, um, this week, like yesterday.
I was gonna ask you, is five hundred high enough?
Yes, I, I think, we've talked with them and we feel comfortable that five hundred is enough. One other thing that I'm also working on possibly is looking at fitness equipment. The company offers fitness equipment as well and gonna see if maybe some of the local organizations in town would want to partner on putting in a fitness equipment area at the park because we can do that relatively cheaply and have the benefit of the eight percent discount as well as installation cost would be reduced if we packaged it with this project now, so.
Could you go one, one slide forward where you had that flying thing?
Oh, the flying thing, the sit-on thing?
What is that? No, back, go back to the red one. What is that? Is that win, is that gonna hold in our wins?
That's just an example of one city, I, that's probably a special.
I thought this was something you were proposing.
No, 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 this is just examples of the different structures that they've designed all throughout the country.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just an example of if we decided we wanted to put in maybe instead of a bunch of benches, one area of covered park benches that maybe we could rent out for birthday parties, we could do that. So.
Well, I think Lindsay needs to really be commended.
I agree.
For her efforts here. She, it looks like she's saving us about a million dollars here, so.
A million, no, only a hundred thousand.
Was a million, wasn't the bid a million and a half?
That's, um, that item's coming down the pipeline. It's number nine, so this is, just a hundred and fifty thousand or, and then if you approve the next item, a little bit more. So, yes.
Item nine cancels the agreement.
Uh, item nine cancels the agreement with HLA for this project.
Right.
But we have to do this item first before we go to that item, I was told, so.
So are you making a motion to approve?
So I'm looking for a motion to approve a purchase order not to exceed five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I want to see if there's any discussion or anything first.
I'll go back to one of the pictures of the playgrounds so we can look at it somewhere.
Lindsay, could you explain to us about the, the zip lines, the slide part? Did they not say something about in reference to, not only is it, um, weight, but it's also age too, so that will allow us older kids?
Said it could hold up to six hundred pounds or something like that, so it, parents can ride on it too. And they said, actually, a lot of parents do like to ride on it. So, yeah, public comment.
Scott Miller, great job. Uh, two questions. Anything about graffiti resistant material?
Yeah, we actually had a discussion about that there that was brought up. They will, we have chemicals that we can use and they said that they provide us with plenty of touch-up paint if that should be a problem.
Sweet. Part, two question, the, uh, ground material. It's, is it compressed? Is it like, I have a mental picture of a hamster cage type of wood chips.
So, sorry, it's, I don't know if you've been up to Petroglyph Park, but it's exactly that same engineered wood fiber, if you know what I'm talking about. So you will have to replenish it at times and go and turn it over every so often.
How is that for heat?
It's much better than the rubber and that was their concern with the rubber here is that it emits so much heat.
We don't have any heat here or anything?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
And I should mention, to you, ask about the graffiti, this company is a company that works frequently down in LA, so.
Lindsay, do they, um, those chips, they're not obviously handicapped accessible, is that correct?
They are, actually.
They are?
They, this is a fully ADA approved, there's only two surfacing options, this or the rubber. Sand is not ADA compliant, but the, the wood chips are.
Getting a wheelchair across those, wow, okay. Did you want to speak, sir?
Yeah. Hello?
Hello.
Go ahead, you're fine.
Oh, Dave Matthews, um, yes. I agree with Councilman Mauer, that Lindsay needs to be congratulated. This is, from what I see here, I may go over to one of the playgrounds and revisit it myself in my second childhood.
Yeah, they said the roller slide is a nice massage table, so.
So now I may have to go over and go on the slides.
Sir?
Yes, one additional comment, I'm hearing discussion about the benches and I, I don't hear about the tables, but they probably are in there. Having been to both parks, I'd say that, that the, at least the tables and benches at Pearson Park, uh, I believe have held up fairly well to the attempts at vandalism. Whereas the ones at Upjohn Park, they've survived. They've got, they're some kind of a mesh metal with a really thick, tough, semi, I don't know, you know, plasticky coating, but, but there's, there's obviously been series of attempts at, you know, a sledgehammer blow was apparent on one of them, lots of cutting attempts and stuff. So, you know, those kind of structures apparently get the vandalism. I don't, I don't guess they go at the playground equipment so much for some reason. So, uh, you know, we need to get something that's gonna, I mean, that's unavoidable. You're not gonna be able to stop it. Can't position a police officer out there twenty-four hours a day, so need to get something as indestructible as possible. The other comment, uh, I would say i- is, is most people, I guess, from my comments in the past, think that I'm totally against parks. These kind of parks I, I support because they are for the general welfare. Anybody in the city can go to one of these parks and make use of it, uh, you know, at the operating times of day, uh, in any case. And, uh, you know, in urban environments, you, you kind of need parks so kids have a little more room outside of running up and down their streets and, and almost getting run over. So I am supportive of this, I, you know, I'm also supportive of the, the obvious attempt at getting the cost as good as we can get it. And in light of the fact, uh, that we've been apprised in the Infrastructure Committee that keeping our streets up to par is going to require three million dollars per year from now till the end of time, apparently, which obviously we don't have. Anything we save on parks expenditures, I'm gonna ask that that be funneled directly into roads maintenance, roads work because that's where the city is clearly hurting the worst if we don't find funds somehow. I don't know if we're gonna do that, uh, or funnel every available dime. The city has got two roads and we're just gonna end up having to tax ourselves even more to keep our roads from falling apart essentially. We've still got a lot of really bad roads in Ridge Creek, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I did forget to mention that this is, um, tab money, so this isn't coming out of the general fund. This is money that we need to get spent in the very near future and it was allocated for this project long ago, six hundred and twenty thousand was allocated. So we're coming in under that amount substantially, so.
Sir?
Uh, good evening, Rick Platts. The question was asked about the lifespan of the covers and I'm assuming that they'll be made of a similar material to the ones that are at the parks on base, that are around base housing. And those have been there for at least nine years, um, to my recollection. And as I look at them, they don't seem to be any worse for the wear. So in our weather, those type of covers seem to last.
And I know we just recently had to replace the one outside of Kermagee, um, for the preschools and, and that one had been there for a, a long time.
Ready for a motion? I'm gonna make a motion, but before I do, I'm gonna ask, Dave Matthews, I want you to call me when you're gonna go out to the park because I want to videotape you. And I move approval of, uh, item eight. Should we approve item nine too, at the same time?
Well. It has to be separate.
A second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Braden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, item nine.
So item nine is to cancel an HLA contract. Previously, when this was going to be bid out, we had an agreement for a company to do that process for us. And so what I would like to see is in light of us going to the purchase order option, we no longer need this consultant. So I'd like to see a motion to submit in writing to cancel the HLA contract. The lawyer, the legal team has reviewed it and we can do so just by writing a letter to them and we will not be penalized.
Any discussion? Any public comment?
And to clarify, this is just the HLA contract. We have two contracts with HLA. This is the one, um, I just heard Mr. Parsons, this is the one specifically for the Pearson Upjohn project at this time.
Yes, and, and regarding that particular subject, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask all the council members to look seriously at pushing, uh, out a lot of these, this contracting activity. Well, I forgot to mention, you know, the, the two parks we just talked about. I don't really see any reasonable, uh, reason why this equipment and, and these cost savings could not have been obtained by the staff member we have here in the city who's paid full-time to take care of these issues, uh, you know, in place of a council member having to take lots and lots of time to go hunt this kind of thing down. I think they should be expected to do that. I think they should expect, be expected to expend our funds the best possible with the most cost-effective means that can be found and, and, you know, they, they're paid to do it. They ought to have the time or make the time somehow to get these things done instead of us wasting more money paying some contractor to tell us what contractor to hire to do things. So that would save us a lot of money and I'm not seeing any good reasons we can't do that.
Thank you, sir. All right, motion?
I make a motion that we approve, item number nine. Second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Braden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, number ten.
Okay, so number ten is, you kind of did a precursor on this one, Mr. Mauer. So this is another project that we are looking at. HLA Group estimated the cost to be for the ballpark improvements to do, to be about one point seven million dollars. They gave a presentation probably six months or so on that ago. They put it out to bid and three bids came in ranging from two point seven to three point one million dollars. So significantly over the estimate that HLA provided us. So basically what we are looking for is some direction from the council on this item because I would like to rethink how we're going at this project. What I would like to do is rather than putting this out to bid as one giant contract, I would like to look at exploring these purchasing contracts. So far I've found that we can use it for the shade structure and bleachers and lighting. And so the other work that's left then is landscaping, irrigation, fencing and concrete work. And so what I would like to see is it broke up into smaller contracts that the city would manage and bid out so that then local companies who are bonded at much lower amounts could actually bid on those projects because we have lots of companies here that do concrete work and fencing work and, and sod and irrigation. And so what we are doing at this time is we've started to get costs from some of the local contractors on those three items. But that's what I would like to see us do and then hopefully we can see things come in much lower so we're not paying a large general out of town, even out of state contractor for this. We know that our Public Works Department, our roadway work this summer is not as extensive as it has been in other summers. So I'd like to see the Public Works Department help the Parks and Rec Department in this process and that way we can put it out to bid ourselves, cut out an extra consultant fee and save some money here as well.
So you want to counsel, cancel his contract too?
Well, not, that will be coming at a future item, possibly. But I would like to just have a discussion on if this council likes that direction as opposed to the original direction that was given.
The original direction didn't work.
Yeah.
Because it was way out of our budget. So, so this is where you're gonna save us a million dollars, right here, right?
Well, hopefully.
Time will tell, won't it?
Yes.
Can't hurt. Does Public Works have the time to do this, Dennis?
Uh, that would be, uh, that would be, uh, to be determined. I mean, we'd have to actually, I'll take a look at the projects that we're involved in because, I mean, you understand the staffing situation we have in Public Works now.
I should mention, everything has already been specced out. I should mention, everything has already been specked out from the HLA contract, so we have all the quantities and calculations which have already been bid out, so it would just be taking that and breaking it up into the smaller contracts. And so we're getting estimates now from the local companies on what they think it would be, so that then we could do a bid process, similar to what the Police Department just did for the fencing area. So, we're kind of following in line with them. That was all done in-house without an extra consultant.
Yeah, we spend a lot of money on consultants, so I'd like to see us save some of it, consult everything. Now, I, I would be in favor of your committee pursuing this. Is that, is that the direction you want? Does the rest of council feel that way?
Does anybody feel differently?
No.
Okay.
No, anything that we can do, you know, we have a, I, I've kind of talked-
You gotta lean forward.
I've talked from the beginning, we have all of our programs to, you know, to shop, what, shop local. I think we could get a new slogan called Contract Local, for anything and everything that we can possibly do, and try to get, you know, if the job can possibly be done here, that we try to remove as many barriers as we possibly can to encourage them to bid, and drop our cost on all these things. I think it's great, so I say yank.
Is there any public comment on this?
You know, in view of the, of the dollar amounts comparatively, and looking at the prior project, I didn't do the percentages, but, you know, saving 120,000 out of 620 is, is quite a bit, so, you know, I don't see any reason why, and I haven't heard the details of the cost estimates came in so high on the ballpark, but I can't tell you if it had anything to do with any kind of companies or processes that installed the bathroom building out there at $600 a square foot. I'm not surprised the bids came in way over cost. So, yes, Mr. Mauer, getting rid of consultants is probably one of the best ideas that's come up at this particular council meeting, and one suggestion, I don't know how doable this is, I'm sure, you know, legal and, and staff will have some feedback on this, but, you know, I've been to several places, and you go out and you, especially ballfields, and you see the fences, and you see all these little banners on, on the fences advertising local companies. Maybe there is a way to entice the local companies to give you a really good price, if they're able to put their, their company banner out there in the various parts of the ballfield. They could sell a little advertisement and, and local pats on the back in the meantime, and we save some money. Doing it piecemeal is something that I have talked about with one of the other frequent commentators here at council ourselves, and, you know, we're going, I mean, it's just hard to see how you couldn't probably save money if you just took it, you know, say, do the fence, find somebody who'll do the fences for you, and, you know, you could go outside of Ridgecrest a little ways, I guess, whatever, to look for, for the suppliers for that. You know, you got, who knows how many guys in town could step up and say, oh yeah, we can do the grass for you. I mean, it's grass. It's not, can't really be that hard. Irrigation stuff is, is the same thing. There, there must be eight, you know, landscape companies in town that would jump on that and be bidding against these, to try to, try to get the work. So, you know, I believe HLA was, that was one consulting for us, coming up with the, the bid, the cost, right? Well, look what they did on the other two parks. I mean, like I say, no surprise. So let's get, get them out of the loop, and go out and just find the best price for every particular aspect of the park that, that we can find. I mean, you know, after all, this, this park got a large chunk of the tab money. If you look at how much it got versus how much roads got, I think it's actually was very disproportionate, but, you know, there it is, and that's what it is. So, I really don't see what reason we can't do it for a lot less than, than what was allocated.
Any other comment? Okay, motion?
All right, let us go.
I'm sorry, sir.
Is this working? Okay. I would like to just give a, a perspective on, on projects like this, where you have a lot of moving parts, where you might have multiple contractors or multiple trades involved, and I offer this just for your consideration here. The, I, I'm sure Councilman Mauer can attest to some of the, some of the challenges with having multiple trades involved and, and multiple contracts, and trying to coordinate those efforts, and, and, and separate invoicing and so forth, just with, with home construction. The same is true, but to a larger extent, with public works projects. We're, we're, we're confined to public contract code and requirements of the public contract code, and we're also confined to having state prevailing wage projects. And along with that comes a requirement of, of certifying, certifying payrolls, certified payroll submittals, the invoicing then for multiple contracts, and then coordinating schedules. And the, there can be a difficulty in managing multiple trades in that if there are scheduling conflicts, they are entitled to file claims for delay, and so I only caution you that it, it, it sounds very reasonable, or, or it sounds very economic sometimes to try to piece things together, but there are definitely complications in the public works world of things. There are also issues of the inspection, the testing of materials, as well as there will be permitting processes there. You have the lights, for instance, that will be installed, will, will require permitting, and that requires a plan to be prepared, and so there's, there are a number of moving pieces here. And so I only caution you that I worry from our staff's perspective, that we have the resources necessary to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, and only offer this for your consideration, and that's, that's all I wish to say.
Yes. We, we have had some discussion on that matter, and so we talked about that extensively, actually, and we thought that, based on the things we're looking at doing for this project are concrete, fence repair, lighting, the irrigation and landscaping. Mr. Patton has been working with us. Unfortunately, he's out of town this week, so that's why I'm doing most of this. But what we found is that majority of those contracts could all be working concurrently, because they're all separate. And then the last person that you would have come in would be the irrigation and sod company. And so, and actually, what Mr. Patton has found is that there's a company that does both the irrigation and the sod work themselves, so they would be relying on themselves. And so the fencing and concrete and lighting work could all be done, and then the last person to come in would be the, the irrigation and sod company. We, this is a pretty short timeline project, so it's not a lengthy drawn-out project, so we don't think it will utilize a ton of staff time, and with all the specs being done already. I'm not sure, Mr. Patton's not here, to ask about if the permitting has already been done for the light and the lighting plan. I'm sure it has, because it already went out to bid, so they would have to have the lighting plan done. So, but we do still have, the lighting would be done through a purchase contract, and that would be included, just like the playground equipment, the purchase of the actual lights with the installation, so they would take care of that.
Yeah, I, I've got grandkids that are playing baseball right now, and I have to admit, I haven't been to one of their games yet, but when I first came to this town, a century ago, it seems, there were signs all around the fields, because I had a youth group that went out and redid them, and the people were paying to have their signs there. Their local business had their, we, we don't do that anymore?
I haven't seen signs, but-
Well, because Mr. Patton's not here, but that was one way they were paying for the, for the-
Upkeep.
For the upkeep, yeah.
It's done elsewhere.
Back in the early 70s.
I'll, I'll bring that back. We have another meeting coming up at the beginning of May, and so I'll bring that up, because we're gonna be talking about the Kermagie project then.
And there were prob, there were probably, you know, I'm going from a long time memory ago, but there were probably at least 30 signs of different local businesses that had plywood signs out there that were painted, and, and they were kept up, and I don't know what they were contributing, but I'm sure they were contributing something. That might be something you wanna look into also.
Yeah. And, and I should mention, too, the reason why I also wanna look at this, because as part of what the original solution was, when the bids came in so high, is that they wanted to cut out some of the features that a lot of the people fought hard, and said they really wanted to see, like the shade structure and some of the grass improvements. And so what they were originally looking at doing is doing spot improvements, not doing a shade structure, not doing the lighting work, which were a lot of the things that were pretty important, as I understand, to the baseball groups that came in and asked for this money.
Well, plus, when we do do the Downs project, some of those lights need to be moved or replaced. Isn't that right, Dennis?
That's my understanding.
Because they're, because they're gonna be too close to the Edison poles.
Okay.
So we have to do some of that anyway.
Okay. Any public comment?
So I'm in the military, but as a side job, I'm a baseball umpire, and I was late tonight getting to this meeting, because I was up in Kern Valley doing the high school game there, between Kern Valley and Fraser Mountain. Tomorrow, I'll be at Boroughs doing their game. My point in telling you that is that, you know, you can tell the difference between a field that was constructed well and one that wasn't. So I urge you, as we're seeking the best deal, which I'm all in favor of, but to implement some sort of quality control, so we're not getting lowballed and getting shoddy or cheap work, because we want a nice field for, for the kids, you know, and I'm sure you all know that, but I just wanna urge you to get that quality control. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Dave Matthews, I would be remiss if I didn't comment on the lighting, which I have been complaining about for over 30 years. Whatever you do to the lights, I hope it solves the problem of the lights shining down or up Downs Avenue, right in the faces of oncoming traffic. I have observed this for years. I've ridden with other people who, when the lights are on over there, and I ask them, do those lights bother you? They say, yeah. So, it is a problem. It's a safety problem, as far as I'm concerned. It has not been addressed for over 30 years, and I hope it gets solved once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other council comment, public comment?
I'd like to make a motion, ma'am, ma'am, that we-
Please.
That, actually, item number 10, that we have direction to move forward with the project.
Second? I'll second it.
Oh, I didn't know if I can do my own motion, but-
Sure you can.
Well, it was-
You're a council member.
It was his motion, so, yeah. Okay, so.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Braden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. We are now at committee reports.
We got one more item.
Did we wanna look at rescheduling the workshop?
Oh, yes, thank you. I'm sorry. So what are we, what, what are we looking at?
You all have the much fuller calendars than me, so. Mr. Thomas's wife is on call. She's on deck.
Thank you, after I supported you.
I just remember last night.
I'm pulling it up right now, I'm sorry. How, how soon are we looking at doing it? In the month of May?
How is the 12th of May? That weekend is the China Lake Museum Foundation Dinner. The weekend before, as, as, as Tex Hoppus spoke about, was, there is a butterfly release at the hospital 11:00 a.m. There is the Girls State, it's American Legion, 11:30, and at 11 o'clock is the event for the USO.
I, I am not available the first weekend of May.
The 12th?
Yeah.
Yeah, 12th is- The 12th is a Friday, but it's not a flex Friday, so I-
I think I'd be available that weekend, but the weekend before that, I would not be.
Do you mean the 13th, the Saturday?
That China Lake Museum, the vacation.
That's a museum, Foundation Dinner.
That they're having, and then that's Mother's Day's weekend.
Ooh.
And I'll be in big trouble.
Tell them, girl.
Oh, I guess I should throw, I cannot do the 19th and the 20th. That is my one thing, ballet recitals.
I can't do that one either. I've got two weekends in May that are already booked.
How's the 26th?
I got a wedding on the 20th.
The 26th is Memorial Weekend. Okay. All right, let's go to June.
We're gonna be doing-
Budget hearings.
Budget hearings, first part of June.
Okay.
Well, maybe we delay this a little while longer, then.
Sorry, it's not that.
Sorry, Nancy.
That's all right.
I guess- Why don't, why don't we all look at the end of June? See how we are, come back?
Wallace? Wallace?
Wallace can't-
I think you need to look at Hawaii.
16th, uh-
He will be gone.
I'm gonna be going for, through the what?
Oh, yeah.
Through the 30th, yeah.
Wow.
Okay, so that's, um-
I'm gonna eat crawfish. No, I'm going to Europe, so.
Wow.
Hey, at, I don't know if we can talk about this. The, the 5th of July meeting, are we going to have that meeting? It's the day after the 4th of July.
I won't be in town.
I may not be in town.
I won't be in town.
Don't have a quorum.
I'm here. Let's have a meeting, Penny's here. Well, if you're gonna have three people gone, we're not gonna have a meeting, so. So if we move that meeting to the 12th?
Traditionally, I've gone most of the month of July. I'm, I'm not sure, this year, we haven't finalized that yet. August is open, though.
That's why I said, maybe we'll check back in July and see if things have calmed down for everyone, past summer vacations and all that good stuff.
I think so.
And maybe we'll have our-
Budget done?
And our new manager.
Okay. All right, so we don't have an answer for item 11. Okay, committee report, City Org. We had an item that we are, we are talking about how to do our meetings in a more efficient, better manner, and we made some suggestions based on Keith's response to us, and we are sending it to Keith for review, and coming back to Org, and then coming to council. I've skipped a few things, but basically, that's where we are. Okay, Finance Committee?
Stan already gave the report on the Finance Committee.
For Stan. Thank you, Stan. You don't have anything else to report?
We had three items, and Stan covered two of them. What was the third item?
One of the things I had asked was that, how we get the sales tax from the internet sales, and I gave you that information from the League of Cities, that Dennis had given me, as well as information that I had gotten before. I would really like us to follow up on that. Would it be better to go to Org, or would it be better to go to Finance?
That was what he talked about.
That was one of the items we talked about, that Stan said we talked about why we couldn't get it, rather than why we could.
I'd like it to go to Org, and that way we get into the actual, how we get it done, not what.
I think what he suggested is that maybe we look at partnering with some other smaller cities, if possible, to try and, because it is an act of Congress, is part of the-
The state legislature.
Yeah, but that's what, there were other cities that, that I had originally talked to at the League of Cities about four months ago, and loved the idea, and in, and in talking to some of the cities at Kern Cog, they all liked the idea of partnering together. So even- So even if we don't get all the cities in the state-
Right.
But all the cities in, in Kern County-
Right.
That had options and abilities to do that.
Well, the county's getting the money right now.
Right, and that's why I want to get-
Can Kern Cog, can you take that to Kern Cog inside?
It isn't a transportation-type thing, is it?
Yeah, it isn't really a-
It really isn't.
I can talk to other, I can talk to other members of Kern Cog.
Yeah, because that's what I was doing.
Okay.
I spent some time going around and talking to the different board members and, uh, whatever. I mean, if you'd like to keep it at Finance, that's fine, but I think it's going to have to go to Org in order to make it, get the legal part of it done. And, but if you want to do it at Finance, I don't care.
Well, Org, I, I, I agree with you that I don't want to see it just go away because, as he pointed out, it's one-point-one million dollars potentially, which is not chump change. So if you think City Org is the place to get that done, I, I'd like to see it done.
Well, I think it's an option. I just don't want to see it lose it because you guys are going to be tied up in budget.
Right.
Yeah.
So-
Okay, put it on Org.
Put it on Org? Okay. If that can happen, staff? Okay, the Infrastructure Committee.
The Infrastructure Committee is, uh, a week from tomorrow.
Okay. Parks and Rec, you all have done your job.
Right. We have a meeting coming up the first Tuesday in May.
Okay. Youth Advisory?
Uh, we meet on the tenth of May.
Okay, the Action Committee?
That's not until September.
Okay. Economic Development Committee?
Um, we met last week. We are discussing our upcoming, uh, convention, the ICSC Convention that we are planning on attending, as well as we had some discussions about starting to look into, um, possibly like a senior retirement village, attracting one of those here and focusing efforts on that. We've been spending a lot of time on industrial, and it hasn't been real fruitful, so we want to shift and see if maybe this other area of development would be more fruitful.
Okay. Other committees, boards, and commissions. Kern Cog?
Kern Cog tomorrow night.
Next Tuesday is, uh, Air Pollution Control District. Uh, there is a meeting on the twenty-sixth, five-thirty here, uh, G, uh, a workshop, not here, five-thirty at the Marriott, and it is the GSA Workshop on Items Number Five, the, um, PAC Attack makeup. And, uh, let me see. Any other reports? Did you have a leak or?
Uh, I'm going to the leak on Friday.
Okay.
And Yucca.
Okay.
So I'll report back at the next meeting.
Okay, do you have any? Okay, City Managers' Report.
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, two things. Uh, one is received from the League of Cities, a, uh, it's a, a request really for interest and to submit applications for any elected officials, that would be council members that are interested in participating on the League of, uh, the League's Board of Directors. They have several, um, at-large positions that they want to fill, as well as the second Vice President position. But, uh, if anyone's interested, it's, it was a hard copy only, they didn't send me an electronic copy. Oh, you all, oh, okay, oh, I didn't know that. And then, uh, second, uh, secondly, on, uh, May eleventh, Fresno State's pro, uh, is, uh, sponsoring a Recreation Summit. Uh, the, uh, the topics are going to include Recreation, Economic Development, Social Justice, Equity and Recreation Programs, Recreation Health and Quality of Life, Recreation for Youth and Families, Planning for Recreation Parks and Open Spaces, and certainly diverse communities. So if anyone's interested in that, uh-
What date again, Dennis, if you don't mind? What was the date again, sir?
That's, uh, May eleventh. You know, I don't know, I just received this, and it's, uh, will be held in, uh, in Fresno.
Oh, Fresno.
Very reasonable rates, uh, it's for, cost of the group is, uh, for a group rate is forty dollars, uh, for, uh, any, well, it's forty-five for two or more, uh, forty dollars for groups of five or more. So anyhow, it's, I have this, and I will forward this to, uh, to Jason.
Can you pass it down, Dennis?
Sure, yeah. That I, that I have electronic copy, if I could forward that to everyone.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Okay, um, Mayor and Council comments, or, I'm sorry, future agenda items?
Yeah. Um, future agenda items? I, I've heard numerous comments on the conditions on developers and how we need to reevaluate the requirements and master plans. Um, I've also been told the Planning Commission can't change codes, um, so I just, I want to know what we need to do so that we can not be so restrictive on the development that's trying to happen and scaring away the developers. Um, it sounds like we're having a problem with that, so...
I would, I would suggest maybe that goes to, uh, Infrastructure Committee first.
Okay. I just want to know where it needs to go so that we can see something done on it. Finance ordinance, I'd, I'd like to talk about modifying the finance ordinance, like Stan mentioned, so that the budget can actually be, include the Finance Committee on reviewing the budget. So I'd like to get that on the next agenda resolution to fix the ordinance. And we already talked about the sales tax, I put that, but we, City Org, so...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to know if we could possibly put on the agenda item, and, and I would be willing to take it from you. Uh, when we first started on council, you came up with an ideal of hiring some people or getting some people on loan that would take care of some of the responsibilities or the holes that we have in staff.
Exactly.
I'd like to see if we can put that on the agenda item to talk more about it.
That came, that, it's already done in California City, and they, um, and if you want to talk to Jennifer, maybe when you go to Kern Cog, you could talk to Jennifer and get the information how it's done. They, they had court time from people who needed to do, needed to do time. Some of the other ones were ones that came from, um, people who just needed a job, and they paid them less than, than they would make, more than they would make at unemployment, and found a lot of good people that they ended up hiring over time. But it was a, a golden opportunity, and they use it extensively in California City.
We, I don't think we fully explored it when you had brought it up.
We didn't.
And I thought we had asked for it to be on the agenda item a couple times, but I'd like to-
Yeah.
Have it on there this time.
Perfect. Mike? Okay. All right, then, uh, yeah, Mayor and Council comments. Start, somebody?
I thought, general comments?
Yes.
I thought it was a great meeting, and it's eight-nineteen, and everybody's smiling. I think it's wonderful.
It's another little bit o'clock.
So you want us to talk for about an hour and a half to keep it?
No, 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 no.
Good job. Lindsay?
Just want to thank staff for an outstanding job, and what they do, and to thank Lindsay for, uh, doing the presentations.
Oh, I would like to add, if you all can keep, um, Randy, our Maintenance Supervisor, and your thoughts and prayers. He actually fell off a ladder last week and broke his leg pretty significantly, um, so, yeah, if you can keep him and your thoughts and prayers, too. I forgot to, about that, so. And he is a huge, huge help to this city, so...
I don't have any, just accept to say thank you for a wonderful meeting, and thank you all for understanding, um, and being so kind to me, so, thank you. So, adjourned.